About 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the April 12, 2021 City Council meeting to order. Because of COVID-19 restrictions, our meeting tonight is being held virtually via Zoom. Public comments for this evening's meeting were accepted in advance by mail and email. These comments will be read into the public record shortly. If you would like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit our website at www.mam.org and follow the directions listed there. As a reminder to the council, please be conscientious with others trying to speak, speak slowly and clearly. State your name prior to speaking if you need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear. Or I should say, if I find it difficult to hear you, I will ask for clarification. The format is as usual, the city council considers items tonight. Staff will present first and there'll be time for council questions. Please hold questions until the end of the staff presentation. If you have a question, I will ask for them and please physically raise your hand so that I can see you on your video. We will move to the Pledge of Allegiance where we will show the flag on the screen. And I'll ask everyone to please join me in saying, saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Individual.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Always sounds a little awkward when you do it that way. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Precisum.
Here.
Councilmember Debold?
Here.
Councilmember Hands?
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Here.
Councilmember Knaff?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Pape?
Here.
Councilmember Silvers?
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Here.
Very good. We'll move next to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening, and those both items are listed under the heading or shall be considered routine by the city council, maybe enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless, of course, you request, get a request from the council, which case that I'm be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Mayor, excuse me, I do have one public comment.
Yes.
Do those first.
I'm sorry, I've ahead of myself. I scrolled down too fast on my script. Do we have any public items this evening or comments?
Yes, we have one public comment this evening. Public comment is from Todd Boyer, 6300 Mackey Street. Greetings, Mayor and council members. When Lee Jeans left Merriam over a year ago, we lost one of our best corporate citizens and a generous supporter of various public and private initiatives. They will rightfully be remembered with admiration and respect. Just as Lee Jeans moved on, so should Merriam. This is a request for staff and the council to consider retiring Lee Drive from the roadway surrounding their former headquarters and returning it to Eby and/or Slater. When Lee Jeans lost Merriam as their headquarters, they also lost the honor of having a street named after them. Merriam's support for local businesses in the form of renaming streets like IKEA Way and CarMax Drive is understandable. However, the benefit of such a gesture shouldn't live in the past, live in past, live past the beneficiary, excuse me. I understand renaming streets isn't a high priority and it comes with costs to building tenants and the city. But those street signs are now at best tributes without meaning. At worst, they're negative reminders of what we've lost. Merriam deserves to look to the future versus going on the past. Even though Lee Jeans was a good business, it's time for Merriam to move on. Thanks for at least considering it. That was our only public comment.
Thank you very much. Thanks for interrupting me because, as I said, I overlooked it. And I won't go through reading the rules on the consent agenda. We have two items. Does anyone wish to have either of these two items removed for individual consideration? During none, then I will entertain a motion in a second for both items. Bob Pape?
All right, I move the council approved consent agenda items one and two.
And Chris Hands?
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second, Madam Clerk?
Member Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Got a couple. Let's see where am I at here? Let's go to Mayor's report and go to the first item under Mayor's report. And this is our first quarter 2021 Employee Service Awards. We have two employees to be recognized this evening. As you all know, we do this quarterly, so we don't have so many people at one time. Obviously, these are all important events, and we want to make sure people get their individual recognition. The first individual I have is Matthew Hirsch from the Police Department, and he's celebrating his five years. So we want to thank Matt for being here for this period of time. I know he's a good productive officer, so everybody can do this, which is sort of like clapping silently. And the next one is a little more special, I guess, because instead of five years, this particular individual's been here for a quarter of a century. And that's Todd Allen, who is a captain with our department. I've got the opportunity to work with Todd for a number of years before I retired. So, you know, it's an auspicious occasion to work any place for 25 years. And we're very pleased that Captain Allen has chosen to spend a quarter of a century serving the citizens of our city. So again, recognition for Todd and his 25 years. Thank you both for working for the city of Merriam. Wish we could have done that live, however. The next item is proclamation, and I received a couple of requests from council to consider this proclamation, and it certainly is a good one. So I'm going to read this real quickly. It's during the month of May 2021 as designated as Bike Month in the city of Merriam, Kansas. Whereas Bike Month was established as a national celebration in 1956 and is supported by the League of American Bicyclists. And whereas the designation is meant to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and encourage more people to give biking a try. And whereas May is also a time of year for people to celebrate Bike and Bike to Work Week and from May 17 to May 23, 2021, as well as Bike to Work Day on May 21, 2021. And whereas bicycling offers an opportunity to invest in more equitable access to key resources for communities and households without a car. And whereas investing in connecting and protecting, protected, I'm sorry, in connected and protected bike lanes and related facilities can be beneficial for local businesses. And whereas bicycling has not only been shown to be an effective form of physically distant active transportation during the COVID-19 pandemic, but also as a means of improving mental health. And whereas greater support for biking policies, plans, and projects will be an integral part of addressing climate change, now therefore, I can system by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Merriam, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Bike Month in the city of Merriam, proclaim this 12th day of April, 2021. So I think we got a couple of bikers on the councils. Certainly, that's a great time to recognize them. So, very good. Item number three. We're going to do a we're going to confirm an appointment of Sean McConnell to the Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2023. I've worked with Sean. He's a former council member. Been active with the city for a long time. I don't know how long he's lived in the city, but it's been at least a couple decades, I would imagine. Mr. Engel, do you have anything to add to that, or?
I don't, other than he's a very highly qualified and well-regarded member of the Merriam residence, so we're happy to put his name forward.
Very good. Well, I'm recommending Sean McConnell for appointment to the Planning Commission. He will be replacing Bill Carter, who's decided to step down for personal reasons. Sean served on the city council for a few years and has been a member of the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, since 2007. Any questions from the city council concerning Mr. McConnell? Great.
You have?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have no question, but I'm just delighted that Sean is willing to come back and work with us again. That's wonderful. I know he's been serving on the BZA, but he'll be more active now.
Yep. Well, if there are no other questions, I will accept the motion for this item, and Mr. Pape has his hand up.
I might add that he's also a Ward Four constituent, so it's actually special for us as in Ward Four as well, too. I'd move the council to confirm the appointment of Sean McConnell to the Planning Commission for the term expiring December 31, 2023.
And do I have a second? Chris Hands?
And I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Congratulations, Sean. Glad to have you. I know you could do a great job. Of course, the court working for you, with you further. Next item, number four, is confirm the appointment of Jennifer Jones Lacy as the Assistant City Administrator. Mr. Engel, would you give us an update on this item?
I sure will. The next item on the agenda is confirmation of Jennifer Jones Lacy as our new Assistant City Administrator. I'm very pleased to put her forward. After review of her cover letter and resume, which were included in the packet, I'm sure yours pleased as I am with her qualifications and experiences, especially those in Northeast Johnson County, which truly set her apart from other highly qualified applicants. As a quick recap of our process, we posted the assistant position in early February. We received 85 applications, not all of them qualified, but we did receive 85 applications. HR was able to narrow that list down based upon qualifications, and the list was further narrowed based on some work history and some online research. Next, we sent a series of questions to six applicants, and based on those responses, HR and department heads interviewed four, and they forwarded their two top candidates to be interviewed by Mayor, the Council President, and myself. I was then actually able to spend some additional time with the applicants, and after putting them, putting them through the wringer, Jennifer naturally rose to the top based on her variety of experiences. Really excited to have her be in addition to Team Merriam. Jennifer is on the call here, and she, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'm very pleased to present Mrs. Jennifer Jones Lacy as your next Assistant City Administrator.
Very good, very good. Any questions by members of the council? Chris Hands?
Again, I don't really have a question. I'm delighted to say that I've already met Jennifer, and so it's really nice to see a face I already know. And that I love that our opportunity to share personnel across Northeast Johnson County continues. That way, people are able to grow and do different jobs, and I think it's really great.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Well, I would like to say, as Mayor, I welcome you here, and I'm sure everyone on the council does. We all accorded working with you. I got to be part of the process, and Jennifer did a wonderful job in her interviews. I was very impressed. Chris, you and your folks did a wonderful job of getting us the people that we need to talk to to make the decision. Wasn't easy because they were all good in their own way. But again, we're looking forward to working with you, Jennifer. Thank you for being here. At this point, I'll accept a motion from Chris Hands.
Great. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council confirm the appointment of Jennifer Jones Lacy as Assistant City Administrator.
And second, Bob Pape?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Motion made in second, Madam Clerk?
Member Caldwell?
Yes, aye.
Member Knaff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Again, welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm excited to join the team and looking forward to my first day coming up here Monday. And I'm really looking forward to getting to know all of you. I think it's, you know, Merriam is a very special organization, and I know the city itself is well-run. So hopefully, I can contribute to that positively. So thank you so much for having me here this evening and super glad I got all my technical difficulties worked out before we started here. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Item number five, and that's Fire Department's annual report. Chief Dean is out there in the hallway waiting on us to get started. Or maybe he's in his bedroom. I don't know where he's at. Home somewhere, probably.
My home, my home office, Mayor. Good evening.
Very good. Can't wait to hear what you have to say.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, just like last year and or at least the last three years, the Fire Department has decided to provide an electronic format of our annual report. You all hopefully have received the links. My task tonight is really to share my screen, go through and highlight some of the items that I think were notable. You know, 2020, I think, has been notable for a lot of folks. Fire Department has been no exception in regards to running critically ill patients that are COVID positive to the hospital, nursing homes, and the like. So I am going to magically switch, try to share my screen here. Hold your breath. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So just walking through, the first part is kind of a welcome and an introduction to kind of help folks navigate, folks that the feedback we've received in this format is they're able to kind of plug into the areas that they're interested in. Some go straight to the videos to find out more about the stories. Some look at the numbers, some look at budget items. So our intention is to kind of provide at least the first high-level information so citizens can look in and get an understanding of what it is that we're trying to relay from a annual experience of running thousands of calls on our citizens. So who we serve, we do break down from county line and soon-to-be county line. So Merriam and Northern Overland Park on 47th Street. We are, by the end of this year in 2021, we will be responsible for down to 215th Street and serving a part of Miami County's contract down to 239th Street. So we are long and skinny, and you know, how we distribute our resources are identified here on the map so folks can find out the fire station or squad house closest to them. As we'll highlight in later in this, Squad 49, the area here at West Gate and 119th Street is our newest location. We have a two-person medical squad that responds from that location and really kind of picks up an area that has some high call volume in regards to assisted livings, Johnson County Community College, and some facilities there that are able to take the load off of fire trucks, both on the 119th Street and our 95th stations in regards to our, again, our squad concept. So our second squad house that is a standalone squad house was put into play in 2020, and we're anxious to start seeing those numbers on an annual basis. You know, that we do talk about the pandemic. We have several videos of how we've approached this and, you know, the different approaches of what 184 employees had to do as far as gearing up and making sure we don't contract COVID or transmit COVID. I would say we've been very lucky in our, in our approach that we have not had any patient to employ transmission. We only had two circumstances where employee to employee transmission happened. Those were isolated, and fortunately, nothing serious there. But, you know, with all the opinions on what we should do and how we should navigate the pandemic in and of itself, I can say as the fire chief, suiting up with the appropriate PPE and going into nursing homes that were infested with COVID, patients that, you know, were critically ill and passed away, putting hands on these patients, none of that was transferred to our employees or taken to our employees' homes when they went home the next day. So that is something I think we're very proud of, of how we did handle this. And again, this fight, even though folks are, I think, folks are fatigued, they have plenty of COVID fatigue. Our work still continues to make sure that we use the appropriate PPE and those types of things as well. Prevention efforts, this was also a good year. As we talk about both prevention and operations, fires were down, as working fires were down. The same causes for that, both in Merriam and Overland Park exist. Smoking is and always has been the number one cause of fires for decades. How the human factors on how people smoke, especially how they smoke when it's cold outside, really continues to be an impact of, you know, us combined with Overland Park, millions of dollars of fire loss every year. City of Merriam had roughly $130,000 worth of fire loss, which is, which is a fantastic number. Zero fire fatalities, fantastic number, and things that we try to keep consistent like that. I think personally, I think you would take those numbers every year if that comparative, your assessed valuation, those are very strong numbers. Also do a lot of inspections to make sure our businesses, coach them to be good business members and members of the community and safe. So we talked some of that, and then the other numbers of note, calls for service were actually down. There was a time during COVID that a lot of folks didn't call 911 from a medical concern. Unfortunately, that was not, you know, the outcomes on that were not good, that people resisted to call 911. So our numbers are down. The time it took for these calls were considerably longer. Gearing up and doffing and decontamination after these calls. So it was a grind for the folks in 90-degree heat, putting all the gear on and going into these situations. But at the end of the day, they did a great job and, you know, again, did not transfer anything from a patient's perspective. The breakdown of calls for service, Merriam ran about 1,600 calls for service. And these boxes, again, are just trying to identify in our service area what's busy and what's not busy. It is clear of Merriam's four and a half square miles, the majority of it is in the red or roughly grids that are over 500 calls for service. You have some orange and you have some, whatever we call that, pale yellow or something. So, you know, every area of Merriam sees the Fire Department. It is, these are, these are active grids comparatively speaking. So I think that, you know, it would not be uncommon for folks to continue to see us and have an opinion on what our, what our experience is like. And I think some of that was reflected in the ETC survey. So be happy to answer any questions on that. And then as we wrap up, again, we talk about more specifically of the COVID. And we also talk about the impact of not only what we did, but the physical toll of our folks in the grind of running those calls throughout the year. So we are definitely taking a concerted effort to making sure our peer support team is out there, making sure folks are mentally well as we've grinded through this. And I think the prescription for everybody is trying to plan something normal away from work, to get away, unplug, recharge, and understand that what we've been through has probably left some scars and calluses, and we just want to make sure that we are taking care of our folks as we hopefully see the light at the end of the tunnel. So, and then at the very end here, obviously, our propaganda, public education, how we train and are, we talked about the squad house. And then, which I think the mayor pointed out when talking about Captain Allen's service recognition, you know, the traditional ceremonies that folks have earned have been kind of shelved. So whether it's new hire academies, retirement celebrations, we've done our best to try to be creative and safe. But there were a lot of folks that we welcomed and a lot of folks we said goodbye to that didn't get, in my opinion, what they deserve. We did the best we could, and so we try to reflect that and highlight their service in this report as well. So hopefully, you get in, look around, click on some of these videos that Jason Rhodes has has created a year that we just want to share on one site. And also want to thank Jason for his, he is the person that really kind of pulled all the data from all the divisions together, along with our deputy chiefs or our fire analysts to make this report what it is. So we also are honoring our fallen officer, Mike Mosher, and with this report, and just definitely want to mention, mention him and the responders that worked very hard to try to save his life on that day. So happy to stand. I'm going to unshare my screen and happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks for your time.
Very good, very good report. Bob Pape, you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I just want to make a comment, Mayor. Chief Dean, I'm sure that Chris Engel, our city administrator, has shared with you our survey that we had done with our business community and our residents. But if he has not, I just want you to know that the Fire Department makes very, very high on citizen and business satisfaction, and that's a tribute to your leadership and to the department. And even though it was a little apprehensive when we let you guys take us over, I'm really glad that we did and continue to support, obviously, that merger and the job that you guys are doing. I just wanted to pass that on.
Appreciate that, Chief. If I remember, this was your idea, all this merger and everything. So no, very much appreciate the feedback. Yes, the ETC survey, both in Merriam and Overland Park, both have the same thing. And so very, very proud of the men and women that are responding on these calls is why we get those marks. So appreciate you identifying that and very, very aware, very proud of those numbers. So I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Silver, should you have a question or comment?
I just had a comment. Chief, I just want to say that I sit through a lot of presentations every day, and yours was one of the most succinct and informative that I've sat through. I think you did an incredible job as, along with the great work you and your department does.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Like I said, I look forward to getting back to normal versus these zones, but I'm glad it came across.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, I have a comment, a question, I guess. First of all, thank you for the report, and, you know, the work that you and the Fire Department do is both impressive and appreciated. While back, we got that big book of all the Johnson County Fire Departments. And leafing through that, there was a noticeable lack of diversity amongst the firefighters. Basically, not only Overland Park, but all of Johnson County, all the firemen are white men. What are we doing to try to deal with that lack of diversity?
Great question and a great observation. I would say I know that that diversity measure is on my annual review with my city manager every year. So it is, it is not, it is something that is a priority with every recruitment, every hiring process. You know, one thing that we are definitely looking is also seeing how we can affect the requirements, you know, currently, the fire departments in Johnson County require individuals to obtain their EMT firefighter one and two certifications before we hire, before they can hire on. The police department, the police side, they hire great individuals and then they pay them to go to see Chief Sisum for and will graduate out of an academy and then they'll start work with the cities. So we have talked about how we go to Johnson County Community College and they rent space from us at Oval and Park. So if you walk in Johnson County Community College classrooms, it's predominantly white males sitting in the seats. So we're trying to change that as well. Our programs with the high school students are diversity numbers for high school students to Blue Valley, Shawnee Mission, Alatha have better diversity numbers for individuals that are looking to come in. So we're, we're very hopeful that that will help identify better recruitment numbers. We also, what we're finding out currently, our numbers with females used to be better. And it's not just Oval Park, but it's across the nation. The number of females are lower than they were 20 years ago. And we're working on that. Our Blue Valley program that we will have an instructor in next fall, currently has 17 students signed up, five of which are females. So we have a long work to go, a long, long road to go. You know, and, and so, I mean, other than saying it's not great and we're working hard to get better, those are the things as far as our recruitment pools of where do we go to find talent? We're working to change those dynamics. And at the end of the day, our conversations with the other fire chiefs in the county is, well, maybe we do more like the police department does. We go out and recruit and hire great individuals. And then we'll teach them the fire stuff. We'll teach them the EMS stuff. That, that is where, like for example, City Missouri does that. I'm just, just talking out loud, that is, that is what we're, what we're doing and up against right now. But your, your, your impression of, from reading that book is spot on. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Chief Deener? Okay. Well, thanks again, Chief. Good job. That concludes the mayor's report. We are going to be moving into council items. The very first item on the, the agenda under that heading is the ETC Citizen Business Survey Result Presentation. And I'll turn this over to Chris Engel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna share my screen, I think. Can everyone see my screen? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. This is our 2021 Business Survey. This is the first time that we have sent this out to our businesses in tandem with our resident survey. Both of these hit the street at the same time. To the residential one, clearly the residence, and then this one went to our commercial sector. Methodology very similar to the residential survey. It was sent by mail. It was sent to 438 businesses. They were all mailed a survey. We only received 64 responses. Wish that was a higher number. Not exactly sure what, what's going on there, but we, we sent over a list of over 438. And there was some duplicates that got narrowed down, but we did send it to 438. So with the 64 businesses that did respond, the margin of error is 12.2 at the 95% level of confidence. There's not enough of these that have been administered in Johnson County or in the metro area to do a comparative analysis as we've done with the residential one. So I asked for the national benchmarks because they do have some national benchmarks. That's been, I'm not sure how useful it's going to be, but I've included it in the packet. How, how we stack up against the national benchmarks. Again, our businesses, you know, are different than other cities, even neighboring cities. So I'll use some of those numbers in my presentation, although I'm not sure if we're an 80 and nationally is a 70 means, I'm not sure what it means, but it was, it's just more data to confuse people and make them truly believe that we, we are doing the right thing. And I, and I do believe that. I think the survey will, will, will share, will, will indicate that. So our overall ratings as a place to do business, I think this is a key takeaway. I think this is, this is the first question that we asked right out of the, the gate. 97% of people said we're average or better, average being white, good being kind of the gray and excellent being 51, but we don't want to be average. We want to be excellent or good. And that's 85%. So 85% of folks say that we are a great or excellent place, a good or excellent place to do business. Nationally, that's 76%. So we're 9% better. 76% nationally of businesses rated their city as excellent or good. And, and we're 85% here. So I think that's a key takeaway. If you don't remember anything else, this says that we're, we're actually doing the right things for the right reasons at the right time. So we're gonna jump into some satisfaction with the following services. This was touched on a little bit a few minutes ago by council member Pape and Chief Deener. The blue and the gray being satisfied or very satisfied, the white being neutral. Again, the, even a vote of neutral means that they have had some sort, or at least we should interpret that as they've had some sort of interaction with these services and they chose to answer the question because there is a do, don't know option that they could have selected if they had no interaction. So you know, we can look at that neutral as, well, as being neutral versus negative or positive. So in our fire services, 95% are satisfied or very satisfied. The US average is 78. Street sweeping cleanliness of public areas, 90% in Merriam versus 63 nationally. Police services, 90% in Merriam, 72% US nationally. Street lighting, 87% of Merriam residents rate that satisfied or very satisfied versus 64% nationally. Storm water and flood management, 85% in Merriam, 62 nationally. Enforcement of codes and ordinances, 82% in Merriam would rate it satisfied or very satisfied. That's 57% nationally. Quality of customer service by city employees, 80% in Merriam, 60% nationally. Street maintenance, which includes sidewalks, medians and curbs, 79% versus 60% national rating. And effectiveness of city communication, 72% rated satisfied or very satisfied, 62% were, was the national rating of effectiveness of city communication. Again, I think we look at those last couple, if you, it will really, if you look at all of those and you roll the neutral in there, all of them are 90%. So, so the total of all of these categories are 90% as being good. I'm sorry, as being satisfied, very satisfied, or having some sort of an inter, interaction and having it be not poor. So while all of these are above 70, if you include that, the, the neutral, they're all 90% or above, which I think is fantastic. I think what you'll find as we go through the survey or as you read it initially, I think what this does is hopefully this validates what we all, maybe we felt, we kind of thought that we handled these things. There's some things that clearly we could maybe put a little more emphasis on, but at the end of the day, we were doing a, a, a pretty outstanding job in all of these areas, at least by our business community. Three most important services to your business. When I ask this question, I think clearly what we can see there is the most important things are public safety and taking care of our streets. You've got police and fire rated highly up there, street maintenance, street sweeping, street lighting. I mean, so I think the, the core functions that we do, public safety, taking care of our streets, our infrastructure, those are the most important things to our businesses. And I think it's interesting because in this next slide, it's going to indicate that we're actually, we're delivering on what's important to our businesses. So cities' performance by department, if you look at fire, you're looking at 100% public, we're, this is, I'm sorry, excellent and good. White is just average. So blue is excellent. Gray is good. Fire, 100% is excellent or good. Public works, 100% excellent or good. Storm water, 100%. It's a little kind of surprising because I know that we do have some concerns with the, with the flood plain, but maybe people are differentiating those because we do have downtown businesses that answered the survey. But 100% said that we're handling it as excellent or good. The police, 92% excellent or good. City administrator, 71% excellent or good. Community development, 66% excellent or good. Property maintenance, 64% excellent or good. And building codes, 63% excellent or good. I think it's important to point out again, white is average. So if you look, even if you start at the bottom at building codes, we're at 80% of as average or above. E, community development is 100% average or above. City administrator, 100% average or above. So we're, we're 80% average or above in all of our performance ratings, which I think again, we should celebrate and take great pride. And again, we, we probably need to figure out why 21% of people have an issue with our building codes. But I think from a business standpoint, I think we probably likely know the answer to that. That's because we are, we are the, the regulators sometimes of, of our codes and sometimes are, we, we are on opposing viewpoints of how we should be interpreting those codes with our businesses. But I think that's what we want. I mean, that's, that's how we keep things tidy and moving forward. So then we ask, rate the following services, fire inspections, 96%, outstanding, construction building permits, 85%, 15% is average. So again, 100% is, 100% is average or above, 85% is excellent or good. Zoning development review, 82% excellent or good. Whites average, there is nothing that's average, but there's 18% in there. Not quite sure what that means. The zoning or development review, not sure if that's, you know, we don't have a grocery anchor tenant, people are tired of looking at Kmart. Did we, did, did removing the French Center from downtown, does that make people think that we're abandoning downtown? Don't really know what that means. Didn't play out necessarily in the comments that were, that were made on here, at least not to clarify why we, there's no average, it just goes to 18%. But again, total excellent or good is 82%. As is the next one, which is occupational and business licensing, that's 82% excellent or good. And then our preoccupancy safety inspections is almost 90%. It's 89%. So again, I think all of those are high watermarks. Those are things that, well, we don't have anything to compare it to, at least locally. I think these are, this is a good baseline for us to figure out when we do this again, are we moving up? Are we moving down? Are we right where we want to be? So satisfaction with the perceptions of Merriam. I could just run down through all of these. I'll just, the ones that we have a national benchmark to compare to, I'll just focus on. Access the highways to Merriam, 97% clearly, because it runs right to the community. That's 78% nationally. Access to the airport, 84% in Merriam, 68% nationally. Overall feeling of safety in the city, 82% to our Merriam businesses. That's 64% nationally. As is quality of services provided by the city, 78% as excellent or good, 64% nationally. So above that benchmark also. Quality of life in the city, 75% versus 68 nationally. Local, quality of local schools, 73 versus 60. Availability of libraries, sports, cultural amenities, 74% Merriam, 71% nationally. Quality of new development in the city, we're rated 72% as excellent or good, 58% nationally. So it's a, it's a little bit, well, considerably higher versus the national average, which may be some of that. It conflicts with the zoning development reviews, but clearly, clearly from a rating of excellent or good, our businesses are acknowledging that we're, we're doing well. Image of the city, 71%, which is actually the exact same as it is nationally. So 71% is excellent, good for image of the city. And then access to quality housing options for the workforce, 68% in Merriam, 59% nationally. I thought that was interesting because clearly there's large conversations about workforce housing and affordable housing. From the business perspective, at least those that answered the, the survey, almost 70% said that it was excellent or good. So with 28% being neutral. So that's kind of just interesting relative to the, the conversations that we're having now about affordable housing. Value the company receives for local taxes and fees, 67% in Merriam, 55% nationally. So you know, over 10% higher percentage rating in our community than nationally. Again, who nationally, who we're comparing to, not quite sure. I have a tendency when these numbers look as they do, where everything's pretty high, to look at the red. Where does the red stand out? Clearly, the biggest one there is availability of parking for your business. 16% of people said that they have an issue with that. They're dissatisfied with that. There is the 12% value company receives for local taxes and fees. But when you look that it's 67% of people that say it's excellent or good, that just balances out. You're always going to have people that have varying opinions of how we should be spending tax dollars. But again, the availability of parking for your business, that's something that we saw in a lot of the comments. I don't know if anybody drilled down into the comments, but that's something that I'm going to mention here again in a couple slides from now. Most important items to keep you in Merriam, I'm just going to cover really anything that's above 20%. And of, there's six items that are above 20% there. We have a hands-on approach, control of four of those items. Number one, overall feeling of safety in our city. That is something that we absolutely control. That's the number one most important thing. Access to the highway where we don't have the ability to move it. We're not going to close off any of the on-ramps, but that's clearly important to all of our businesses and, and, and really an asset. Well, it kind of divides our community. Geographically, it really is a huge asset to our business communities and, and access to the, the larger region. Image of the city, I think all of the things that we do play into that image of the city. So I think it's important, as I know all of you do, to keep that image of the city up because that really means something to our businesses. Proximity to other businesses, we kind of have some control over that, but really similar to image of the city, the things that we do and we do well that recruits and retains our businesses as opposed to having a hands-on approach to having other businesses that are important in our community. We don't have as much control. Quality of services, then quality of life, we, everything we do feeds into those. I mean, those are, that are, those are woven into our values. They're woven into our goals and objectives. And so those are, those are the things that we can control. And all of those things, I think we would all agree with. They're important to our residents as well as our businesses. So we, we continue to focus on those things. Interesting question, the overall business atmosphere versus five years ago. 77% nationally say that there's no change, but it's good or better. In our community, that's 94%. So 94% of respondents said that there's no change, but it's good or it's even better. That's, I think, fantastic. I think that says that we are, we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. We don't just have a good geographic location, but we do have good policies and procedures in place for people to, to do business. And they're getting, they're getting better. At the very least, they're not getting any worse. We ask a similar question about downtown business atmosphere versus five years ago. This one I would kind of approach a little bit differently. We've got 85% that say no change, but good or better. So that's 85%. But really, if you, if you look at your no change, but poor, your no change, but good and better, that's 98% of people think that things aren't getting any worse. Now, 13% of those people think it was poor five years ago and still think it's poor. But it's not getting any worse downtown, which, which I think, you know, we've got, that we, we have, we've heard from some folks that downtown, that we need to spend some, some attention and some resources down there, which clearly we're doing. But I thought this was pretty heartening that most people don't think that there's a whole lot of change that's occurring down there, at least to, to, to the negative. So I think that's fantastic that the majority of people think that it's good and it's getting better. And we're only going to make it better the more attention that we spend down there redoing streets and making whatever we do at 5701 and up and down Merriam Drive more attractive for our businesses, more attractive to get bodies down there that ultimately gain exposure for our businesses. So I think this is a, a very heartening, at least the way I look at this, that this is the perception of downtown from, from our businesses. Satisfaction with codes and regulations. I put this slide on here just because this is usually an area that gets, kind of gets hard knocks a little bit. But from a satisfied and very satisfied, which is your blue and gray bars, you're looking at 84%. Say the, the condition of existing signage is satisfied or very satisfied. Adequacy of city signage for the codes and regulations, 73% nationally, it's 57%. Condition and maintenance of business properties, 71% say satisfied or very satisfied versus a national percentage of 59. So about, about a 12-point swing there. And then existing levels of city code regulation and enforcement, that's 70% of folks that are satisfied or very satisfied. 26% were, were neutral or average. But it looks like city code and regulation enforcement is about right where it should be, 70%, 55% nationally. So we're 15 percentage points higher than the national average of a, in that particular category. Adequacy of existing business property maintenance, codes and regulations, it's 64%. 29% is average or neutral. So 64% will by itself, we're not satisfied or very satisfied. We only had 7% on the downside. Uh, we only had seven percent on the downside in that, that particular category, so again, uh, I think these are all things that I think we hoped we would see when we got, uh, the results to this, but I think this just starts to confirm some of them. Again, not that we don't have things we need to work on, we're always looking at ways to improve our relationships with, with our business and just improve the way that we do things, but I think this really validates, uh, I think many of our beliefs that we're, we're doing, we're doing the right things. Uh, important question, any barriers to your growth in Merriam, uh, seventy-two percent, uh, said no, twenty-eight percent said yes. Uh, one of the reoccurring themes in here, uh, as I mentioned before, is parking. So, you know, uh, we are landlocked, we're four point five square miles, we've got highways, we've got creeks, we've got railroad rights away. Uh, we've got commercial that runs in the middle of our residential areas, um, you know, most of the comments, if you read into the comments, are about things that are either structural or geographic, meaning if you're downtown and you're looking for more space, you're looking, excuse me, for additional parking, it may not be there, it may, it's, it's just, unless you're willing to buy out your neighbor, um, those things just aren't there. But, uh, seventy-two percent, there are no barriers to growth, which is fantastic, so that means that a large portion of our businesses that are here, um, are can continue to grow, can continue to thrive, uh, we can continue to work with, uh, well, we'll continue to work with all of them, but I mean, we can continue to help them grow in ways that we can, that are appropriate, uh, so I think that's a, that's a, that's a great slide to see. Uh, next are just going to be our opportunities, uh, this is, this is our, um, satisfaction rate, uh, rating that goes by satisfaction and importance, uh, the things that are down at the bottom are the things, uh, that have a lower satisfaction level. Uh, but I think it's important to point out that over in the left-hand, lower-left corner, you've got effectiveness of cities, city communications. Um, that's seventy-two percent, even though it's down on that axis, it's seventy-two percent versus sixty-two percent nationally. And if you take the nineteen percent of neutral, that effectiveness of city communications is actually ninety-one percent average or above. So, well, yes, it's an opportunity and it's down here in the corner, we're still doing a pretty doggone good job of it. Uh, I will point out that when it comes to effectiveness of city communications, um, we communicate with our business folks the same way we do with our residents, when we mail things that we have highlights, when we send out the, uh, visitor's guide. Uh, those things go to our businesses, you know, we send letters to them just like we do our residents, so, um, so we try to figure out exactly what that means, uh, we take all those things into account. Uh, but again, I think if you throw the nineteen percent neutral on that, really, that's ninety-one percent that that effectiveness of city communication. Opportunities for improvement, I think is our street maintenance, including sidewalks, medians and curbs, again, using that same idea, it's, we're, we're rated at seventy-nine percent. So that, even though it's down here, you know, underneath the axis, uh, it's seventy-nine percent versus sixty nationally. Uh, if you throw in the eighteen percent that are neutral, ninety-seven percent think that we're average or above. So, uh, again, these are opportunities for improvement, uh, we will continue to emphasize the things that we do well, we'll continue to look at these things and figure out, uh, are there ways, uh, are there actual deficiencies, or are these just, um, uh, varying levels of expectations that we're not meeting, but perhaps they're not, uh, reasonable levels of expectation, I mean, we need to do a little bit deeper dive into some of this. But I think at the end of the day, I think the, the, the takeaway from all of this is that we are a good place to do business, that as we strive to grow a community and continue to, um, grow a community that's, that's, uh, desirable to live, work and play in, I think the resident survey and the business survey pretty much, uh, validate the fact that this is a great place to live. This is a great place to work, uh, and we're working on making it a great place to play. And some of our commercial areas and some of the areas where we need to do a little bit more development. So, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions about this, uh, I didn't cover every single question that was in there, but I covered the ones that I thought were most meaningful to the council, but I'm happy to ans, happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Chris Hands, you have your hand up?
Yes, I, I found it really, really interesting, um, I, and, and good. I do wonder, um, if I missed it, please tell me where it is. In the resident survey, we had dots to indicate parts of the city that had responded. Since we only have sixty-four, I'm really interested to know if they're clustered in the new auto people, or if they're downtown, or where they are.
That is a great question, I didn't, I didn't even ask for that, but yeah, I will ask and see if they can't produce that.
And, and I'm, I'm sorry, and I also remember long, long ago that we were, I think maybe when we did our first customer or resident satisfaction survey, we said if we didn't get enough respondents, that ETC would actually make some phone calls to try to get people to respond. Did they have to do that to get this number?
They, they didn't, the number that they needed was sixty, so then, so they got sixty-four, and that was what they needed. Anything over that just, um, tightens up your margin of error, so sixty was the number that they needed, and that's, they got sixty-four. But, but I, but I absolutely, um, I didn't even, to be honest with you, I blanked out on the map, but yeah, I will, I will see if that's something that they can produce for us, I'm sure they can.
Jason, you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I wasn't actually going to make a big deal out of this, but as long as you're going back to ETC, could you ask them maybe to check their numbers, I did see, um, on page fifteen, one of the, one of the, uh, set of numbers equals a hundred and one percent?
Yeah, that, that show, I, I, that, that shows up in several, um, the reason that that happens is when they pull the don't know answer, because I asked that same question, when they pull the don't know answers out, it gives them decimals and then that, the graph just rounds it up. Um, so, so if, I don't know that exact question, fifteen, we can look in there, but I would, i- if what I just told you, what, which is what I was told is correct, if you go and you look at the full answers in the back where the don't know is included, that should equal one hundred percent. But in taking that out, and then the rounding for the, the graph itself, that's why it ends up being a hundred one, that, that, that is something that, um, occurs on several of the graphs, I mean, it, it's, it, as I was trying to come up with numbers of excellent and good, and then compare that to something else, I'd go, wait a minute, this doesn't, yeah, I, I, I checked in on that about two weeks ago, but that's a, that's a nice, uh, nice catch.
Okay, that makes me feel better, thank you.
Any other questions? Very good, very good, uh, pleased with the numbers, I'd, I'd love to see over a hundred on respondents though, and, and, um, and also, uh, like to see us be able to compare ourselves with, uh, Johnson County or metro areas, but, you know, it's just the way it is. All right, uh, thank you very much, uh, we're going to switch gears and move into item number two under the council items this evening. Uh, and this is consider approval of an agreement with Johnson County for enforcement of county health orders, uh, Chris, would you give us an update on this item?
Absolutely, this is, uh, very similar to, uh, the item that was in front of the council in December. So if you will recall, when the Board of County Commissioners sits as the Johnson County Board of Public Health, they can pass public health orders. Um, those public health orders are being enforced by the county through Johnson County Codes. Uh, there is some question, um, if with home rule authority, which we have as a, as a Kansas city, uh, if they have the authority to enforce, enforce in Codes Court without an agreement with us, us being the city. So, uh, the health, there is a new health order that was approved by the county on March twenty-fifth, and that is in effect through April thirtieth. So similar to the last public health order last year, I think that was, uh, late November, we approved it in early December. Uh, they are asking for permission to enforce their health order in Merriam. Uh, I will, uh, remind the council that their approach is one of, um, educating, uh, of, of the last health order, they only were in Merriam twice, and both of, neither of them ended up in Codes Court, both of them were just educational, um, uh, conversations that they had with businesses. Uh, they have assured us that that will be the same way that they anticipate going forward. Uh, to put that in context, of all of Johnson County cities, there were only thirty contacts from the last health order. So, um, thirty health, thirty contacts with, from Johnson County Codes to all of the county, two of which were in Merriam. This order, uh, the, if, if the council were to consider this agreement for the county to enforce the health order, uh, it would expire with this health order, it does, it, 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 uh, it is tied only to the existing health order, so if they approve another one, we would have to come back and do this again, which, uh, I would recommend, I think that's what we should do, I think we should consider each health order as they, uh, as they perhaps evolve uh, on the, the merits and what we believe in each one. So, uh, be happy to answer any questions about the health order, very similar to what you saw in December, and again, would expire on April thirtieth.
Mr. Silvers?
I feel like you already answered this, but I'm just trying to clarify, if there is a codes violation with the health order, um, would it be the Johnson County Sheriff's Department or the health code enforcement? I don't know, police?
So, that, that, so, good, good question, the, um, normally, we, the DA would have the ability to come in and enforce this, there's a, there's concern with the backlog in court, so the, the county has the ability to enforce the health orders in their codes department, very similar to our codes department. They have their own cord, codes court, so it would, it would be codes employees, so there will not be anyone showing up with badges or guns, it will literally be probably somebody in jeans with a clipboard that says, we, we had a call, uh, and, and these are reactive, these are, um, at, at the initiation of someone in the public, they don't just go out and, uh, patrol the businesses in Johnson County. So it would be someone has called and said, hey, I believe there's a violation of the pub, pub, public health order. They would go and it, it won't be immediate, so it's, if somebody calls at eleven-thirty and says, hey, I think there's people in here without a mask on at eleven-thirty PM, nothing's going to get done that night, because it's going to be handled as a codes case, but in order for them to, uh, if they need to, take this to Codes Court, they would need the permission of the city to enforce that. Uh, I would, I guess I'd defer to the city attorney, Ryan, I, I think I have that correct, is that your read on this also?
Uh, yes, so, I'm sorry, you were saying that they would have to go to Johnson County Codes Court to enforce it?
Yes.
Right, yeah, I, I talked with, uh, the legal counsel when we went through this exercise the first time, uh, Cindy Dunham, and she, she in essence said that's why the agreement is necessary, they didn't think that absent the agreement, that they could, they thought there was some doubt that absent the agreement, that they could, um, take any action in, in county codes court in, in an incorporated area of the county.
That answer your question?
Yes, any other questions, anyone else? Seems like a no-brainer to me, uh, but obviously something we want, uh, buy in from the council. Um, this is a county order, I think the county needs to be the one enforcing it, and we, we stand by to help them, but again, I can't imagine why we need to, uh, I think the primary initial, uh, concern was large events, issues, things like that, so. If there aren't any other questions, I'll entertain a motion in a second, Bob Pape.
Mayor, I'd move the council through the government enforcement services agreement for Johnson County, uh, local health officer and county board of health orders.
And I have a second, Chris Hands?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, now clerk.
Councilmember Nat?
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Dee Bold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Call doll?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good, thank you all, and, uh, thank you, Chris, for giving us that update, we're going to move to CIP and listen to another one of our staff members, Director McDonald, how are you this evening?
I'm very good, thank you, good evening, mayor and council, I have your, uh, April CIP update. Um, I'm going to start with the twenty-twenty-one street improvement program, which is basically three projects combined into one program, uh, which is the East Frontage Road, sixty-seventh to seventy-fifth Cars Project, the twenty-twenty-one Mill and Overlay Program, and then the Sidewalk Repair and Maintenance Program. Um, at the end of March, we met with, uh, JM Fahey, who's a contractor along with the Finnis, um, to discuss the scope of the project and, uh, the cease expectations that we are expecting for this project. And they provided, provided us with the current schedule. Um, East Frontage Road, um, is currently scheduled to start on April twenty-sixth. Um, the Mill and Overlay Program, uh, which is Goodman Craig and a few of the other streets, um, is early June. And then the sidewalk maintenance is, uh, late June, when they plan on, uh, getting into that, uh, program there. Um, on April first, we had our, uh, public meeting, um, we had about fifteen, uh, residents in attendance, um, they asked some good questions, everyone seemed satisfied. Um, didn't have any issues, um, they just wanted to see what was going on in front of their house, and so that went out very well. Um, the next item on here is the, uh, West Vernon, um, PES, um, and that is for the, we give that BHC Roads Engineering. Start project was March twelfth, um, staff had the kickoff meeting on, uh, March twenty-ninth, and we discussed our objectives for that, uh, engineering study. Um, and, and most of you have probably seen today in your emails that, uh, letters went out to residents, um, inquiring about any existing, uh, drainage concerns that they may have. Um, we anticipate those to come back, um, towards the end of April, um, and BAC Roads will analyze those and, uh, put that stuff together for our project. Um, the last item on the update is the twenty-eighteen Johnson Drive Project, which was the West Sea Limits to Kessler. Um, that two-year bond was ready to expire for that project, so we, uh, walked that project with the contractor, pointed out some areas of concern. Um, so they've been working on replacing some cracked sidewalks and a few driveway approaches, um, and they're about to, uh, complete uh, those sections over there on Johnson Drive. Um, that's all I have for, uh, the April update, I'm free to answer any questions.
Chris Hands?
Is the East Frontage Road, do we have an estimated end date?
Um, they gave me a thirty-five day, um, project for that, I'm not sure if that, if that can consist of a Mill and Overlay Project, um, they made us mostly like the curves, the sidewalks. Um, they may combine the Mill and Overlay with, uh, the other ones, have their equipment all at one time. Um, but I'll get some more information on that by next week, um, for that project. Um, that does not include the traffic signal work, because those items are way, way out, um, as far as getting parts for that. Um, so that, that will probably be after the completion date, um, but we knew that going into the project.
But that wouldn't, that wouldn't hinder, um, traffic flow, right?
No, it will not, the existing traffic signal will, will remain, um, and they're going to build a new traffic signal, um, while the other one's there, and then they'll shut the other one off on the weekend, turn the other one back on, so that, there should be little, little impact.
Okay, yes, I would like to know more about that, thank you.
Yep, I'll let you know.
Mr. Neil?
Uh, yes, uh, regarding the, uh, West Vernon Place Study, I was wondering if, um, uh, some of the data that, that Bob and I gathered, um, in, in the past about this, if any of the, you know, we, we, we were out there during some of the, some of the storms, and, uh, whether or not, uh, there was a way to communicate that information that we, we gathered to them, or what is the process, unless we have, you know, a big rain event. I know we talked about at one point them, actually, um, or I don't know if we talked about them, but in the context of addressing this problem, you know, we, the purpose of doing it in the springtime is when the weather, um, might give us some on-the-ground inspection capability, so I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. Some of the information we already developed, that they at least see that, and, uh, what the method might be for, for getting that to them. I may be out of, out of line in asking that, but I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Oh, no, a- any information you have, um, is clearly Oh, no, a, any information you have, um, is greatly appreciated. Um, if you can get that to me, um, because I'm their main contact, and then I can send that to BHC Roads, um, that'd be great. Um, we even asked the residents if they have any videos, any pictures, send that to us. Yeah, if, any, anything we have, um, would be better. We do plan, we did speak to them, and they're going to watch the weather, um, and their, their plan is to have someone come out and win it in the rainstorms if they can to see what's actually going on. Um, our shop is so close to it, uh, myself and the project coordinator, we, we plan on running out there if we get, uh, uh, you know, a flash, flash event and take some videos, and we provided them some that we got, uh, two years ago.
Yeah, we, we do have some, some videos and some, some film too, or some, uh, pictures also, so, yeah, definitely will try to do that. What is their, what is the timeline of that? Because I'm going to have to find them now. It's a little bit.
Well, I mean, it's, they're, I mean, they're in the collection phase right now. I mean, the, the project's supposed to end up sometime, be completed sometime in August. I mean, so if you can get that to us in the next fourteen to twenty-one days, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Jim? Okay, thank you very much, Jim. Have a good night. Mr. Angle, do we have any staff items this evening?
Uh, I don't at this time, no, Mayor. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Okay, we're gonna, are, are any new business items that I believe, at least that I've heard of, and so, uh, with that, I think we're at the point where we need to go into an executive session, and what I'd like to do, uh, we've got, it looks like it's about, uh, what, twelve minutes after? I think probably on the adjourned time, uh, read adjourned time, probably about, let's, let's try this, uh, at, uh, seven thirty-five, and then we can give everybody a few minutes to, uh, I'm sorry, eight thirty-five. Give everybody a few minutes to get back into our other Zoom, uh, environment. So if someone would like to be brave to make, uh, a motion going into executive session with that adjourned time, that'd be great. Go ahead, Mr. Pape. Turn on your, off your mute there, sir. There you go.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'd move the council recess in the executive session to discuss a personnel matter regarding non-elected personnel as justified by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B-one, which allows the city council to recess into the executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. President will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator, and human resource manager. The opening meeting will resume in the regular Zoom session at eight thirty-five PM.
I'm motion, I have a second. Chris Hands.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Call doll.
Aye.
Councilmember Nat.
Aye.
But you're right. I think we're pretty much all here, aren't we? Raise your hand if you're not here. How's that? Okay, well, we are at, at the end of our meeting. There is no further business. And so I will entertain a motion and a second for us to adjourn this evening. Bob Page.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
And second, press hands.
I second that.
She made in second. Madam Clerk.
All in favor.
Bye.
Good evening.
Bye.